Welcome to the July 7th Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of the Planning Commission meetings from the May 5th meeting. Does everyone have a chance to look at them? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Second item, zoning amendment. Consider zoning amendment for Cornelius Gardens. You want to lead, is that you, Bern?
Yes, it is. How you all doing today?
Good.
So, we have a zoning amendment application submitted by Kiering, I believe, with the Cornelius Gardens properties. Essentially here, they're asking to take, have the area rezoned from a professional office district to a single-family dwelling district. Let's see here. There, essentially here, the commission has seven items to consider while deciding whether they will, you will approve this rezonement here. The first item listed is whether the proposed changes would be consistent with the interests and purpose of the zoning regulations. The city's adopted comprehensive plan and other adopted policies, programs, ordinances, rules, and regulations. The second consideration is whether every use that would be permitted on the property, if it were to be reclassified, would be compatible with the use permitted on other property in the immediate vicinity. The third consideration, or third factor, is whether the subject property is suitable for the uses to which it is currently restricted. And the fourth, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. And the fifth, whether the proposed amendment will correct any error in application of the zoning amendments. And sixth, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected, and if so, what the nature of such change or changing conditions are. And lastly, the seventh factor, whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss, if any, to individual landowners in the area in comparison with the public gain. If any, that could be attained by the reclassification. And there's also a few things on top of that to determine whether you can have, I guess, a complete hearing. I mean, a quorum was, a quorum is present, right? You have to determine, you have to determine if proper notice was given, which we can get into that when the notice letter was sent to the surrounding residents in the area. Let's see. Report by commissioners and staff as to all written oral communications that have been received in the application. Introduction of the application by the commission and professional staff. Presentation by the applicant and commission and staff questioning of the applicant. Receipt of any public comments on the application, which that would happen, I guess, here, right? And closing comments by the applicant, closing of the public hearing, discussion deliberation by the commission and by the commission's professional staff. And then lastly, if the commission here so chooses and so decides, adoption or findings or, excuse me, adoption or findings in the formulation of the commission's recommendation to the governing body of the city. Is there any questions about the attached documents that we need to go further into or how this process works? Again, I can re-explain that.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. All righty then, that's it for me.
Okay. Is the applicant here? You want to come up to the podium? Did you have anything to add?
Well, there is, the request is really to rezone the whole block, and it's not just our-
Oh, I'm sorry, state your name.
I'm David Quering.
David.
So, yeah. So, the, there are two other residents on the, landowners on the block, the Gardinas and the Beeson's, and they've also, they've made application as well as part of this whole thing. And, but there was an omission in the, in the application or the way the process went here, in this property in the far southwest corner, which would be called 126 South Hind.
Right at that corner, second and hind.
Yeah, that right there. That was not included, and we have since then made application to have that included. So, I-
Is that included tonight?
It is, it is not.
It is not?
It is not, no. But just, point is that rezoning the whole block is the, is the destination here. And, and that, of course, that's just logical not to do little bits here and there and restore this area to an R1 so that folks can have confidence that it's going to be single-family dwellings.
Thank you. Is there any questions? You good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Probably need to go through the criteria. Bern, do we need to go through those one by one?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do the public hearing first. Yeah. Is there anyone here from the public who wants to speak on this matter? We'll close the public hearing? Okay. Okay, let's go through these one by one. First criteria, whether changed, whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purpose of these regs, with the city's adopted comp plan, and other adopted city policies, plans, programs, ordinances. Yeah, go ahead if you have any comments.
There is a staff comment for the first line item. When considering the change of zoning classification for any piece of property, it is necessary to consider whether every use that would be permitted under the requested classification would be appropriate for the property in the surrounding area and not just focus on the use that would, that the applicant indicates, indicates is intended or is presently being employed. This is because there is no way to prevent the applicant or any future owner of the property from using the site for any, for any other, for any of the uses permitted under their requested classification. In other words, the use of property may not be restricted to the particular use contemplated or in existence when the request is made, but may include any use allowed within the zoning classification. So, there's a attached map, which is attachment D for graphic representation of the zoning of the surrounding properties. So, that's what we've been looking at.
And it appeared that the zoning, R1 zoning is around it and R2 is to the north, so it is consistent with the usages in that area. Appears so.
Correct.
Agreed.
Agreed, okay. B, whether every use that would be permitted on the property, if it were reclassified, would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property located in the immediate vicinity, and whether the subject property is suitable for the uses to which it has been restricted. And I think that goes to the same answer as number one with consistency of the zoning in that area. Are there any other comments?
None.
None? Okay. C, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. And staff comment, all public utilities are existing adjacent to the site. So, that's pretty obvious. D, whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. Staff was not aware of any errors in the application of the zoning regs to be corrected through the requested zoning amendment. And E, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected, and if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions, and whether the proposed amendment provides a disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowner relative to the public gain. Staff comment was, staff is not aware of changing or changed conditions in the area and does not believe the amendment would create a greater loss to individual landowners relative to public gain. Everyone agree with that?
Agreed.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning reclassification to R1.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the zoning amendment from, to R1 for Cornelius, I don't know why that's so hard to say, for me. Gardens, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Doing great.
Okay, next item. Consider a preliminary plat for Prairie View addition. Justin, you want to go through this one?
Yep. Yeah, we have a preliminary plat in front of us tonight that we've been working with the applicant owner of Prairie View through Cow Valley Engineering. City staff requests that all future development within Block 1, Lot 1 will require the property owner or developer to meet all city regulations. Examples would be that they would construct a primary and/or their secondary access from the east, from East First Street within the provided right-of-way on Block 1, Lot 1. Install all necessary fire hydrants, install all necessary sidewalks, and then construct the water sewer distribution collection system and extend it along the property line. They would also provide us with the proposed access parking agreements for us to review. Also, within the preliminary plat, we would request that they add their surveyor and seal to that, and we would also ask that they add the minimum elevations to the building and structures. With this, we've had the applicant request a few waivers, and this comes now with our comments and their comments, and the Planning Commission has the authority to allow these with the understanding that such waivers may set precedent for future projects. The first waiver that they're requesting is that the streets and the sidewalks, the first one is the streets, sorry, that's streets and sidewalk, but they're just doing the sidewalks. They're requesting that they wouldn't have to put those in, and the city is asking that they would exempt one, which would be on the far east side, and have them put in the west side at the time that development would happen. The request waiver number two would be for the water and sewer extensions, that if they were to, can you go to their drawing? Might be a little easier to explain. Go to the couple next ones. They have water and sewer that's going to go down approximately 800 feet, and we would request that they would continue to build this out as, as development happens, or this would become a private line, and then they would have to build or be a part of a no protest when it go in on the far east side with the road and all of that. And then the waiver number three would be the same thing for the road that would go along the right-of-way line on the far eastern side, and then staff would not be in support of waiving that. Access should be suitable to improve and extend the boundary to the subdivision per the regulations. So, it comes before you now to make the decision if you want to waive those or if you want to follow staff comments.
Is the applicant here? Who's? Can you state your name?
Good evening. Kirby Petro with Cow Valley Engineering Agent on behalf of the project.
You said Kirby?
Kobe.
Kobe, okay.
Yep. Yeah, so, just going through the intent of the project here, so this isn't any kind of additional expansion, this, the whole purpose of this is just to expand the current Prairie View hospital. So, currently, the property is unplanted, so to do any future building, they have to obviously plat the property, which is why we're here today. Instead of platting the entire property, we decided to kind of portion off this sliver. It's about 16 and a half acres. The intent for this part, piece of land is for these transitional housing units. Currently, they're proposing to build three 800 square foot units for, or buildings for six units. The intent is if these do well, which I think there was a memo at the back, kind of the reasoning behind these transitional units, it's really to serve the people of the clinic to kind of transition, so that way they're not coming straight back for treatment. So, with that, if these do well, the kind of hope and the goal is that they continue to expand these and build a couple more, but obviously, we don't know what the future holds on those. So, I'll go through kind of the staff requests. We have some kind of disagreements with two of them.
When you say a couple more, is it, and they would be in that same area that the three are located?
Correct. They'd be in this similar area. They'd be kind of bunched together, and then fire access and things like that would be addressed when those come up.
Currently, they have no plans for any more. Right now, they're looking at a total 400 square foot piece, and they're going to put a common wall, so it'll be actually three, three units, but there'll be two per-
Oh, gotcha.
-the common wall dividing.
Okay.
And the whole purpose of this is just for their transitional housing, people who are getting ready to be released from their program. It gives them some independent living, yet with supervision. And so, part of this is why we're asking for these waivers or variances on these things is, you know, they don't want these people to have, they don't have cars, they don't want them to have access to the road or friends and family driving in to see them and all that sort of thing. So, that's part of the reason for the type of facilities they want.
Yep. Yep, so going with the city request, the first one was any future development of Lot 1, Block 1 will require extension of the utilities and the street, which I'll kind of talk about the street here in a second. We're just asking that, that request be waived, because obviously, the ultimate goal is hopefully they get a few more of these buildings, so we don't want, you know, if they come in and they want to do three more buildings, these are only 800 square feet apiece. There's no reason to extend public street down to service these. It's still going to be accessed solely from their campus.
So, the waiver number one, just for clarification, we are talking about industrial road that's shown on the plat?
Correct.
Okay, and the sidewalk is along industrial road, not along First Street?
Correct. So, that, going with waiver one, the intent of that waiver is to waiver both requirements for the street and the sidewalk down industrial road. Industrial road is just granted right-of-way since this property, the east edge is the section line, so we're just giving a 70-foot right-of-way for any future arterial streets that may extend down that. And then, the second request, which I'm going to let Chuck talk a little bit more about, is the surveyor seal. This is preliminary in nature. We're just-
That's not an issue whatsoever. I'm not used to putting sealing preliminary plaques, but I can do that. You always seal a final recorded plaque. So, that was just an oversight on my part, because like I said, that's nothing that I'd ever encountered before.
Yep. And then waiver two is, we're proposing to keep the public in easement here. The intent is just to extend to these units. Currently, there is no development planned to the south that we know of, so extending these any further through the property would just come at a large expense to the owner, and they would just say, empty, nobody would actually access or use them. And then lastly, the final waiver is the paved access requirement. Originally, we were in discussion with the city staff. They had talked about extending an access to the property line from the existing parking lot, which, I don't know if we can go to, the fire exhibit might show it a little better. So, you can see the existing parking lot there. We are planning to put a turnaround there for the fire, fire trucks to have a turnaround point. Originally, we had talked about extending a paved portion over to the property line. We just find it's unnecessary, since there is no actual vehicle access to these, it would just be basically a 12-foot stub of pavement that leads to nothing. So, what we're asking today is to approve the project with all waivers and then excluding kind of the first portion of the city staff request. The owners are okay with a no protest agreement if any development happens to the south, but we would like to waive any future development to Lot 1, Block 1, which is our parcel here. And we can stand for any questions.
So, there will be an access easement provided for the road for fire and emergency. How is trash handled? Will the, will trash trucks have to be coming up to these?
Do you guys have a plan where trash would be? You guys have trash in that parking lot, don't you? You guys have a dumpster at that parking lot? Yeah, there's already a dumpster location in that.
At that parking lot? Okay. But will the trash be, have to be picked up there, or will it be picked up for these red, these three new buildings?
The trash truck will pick it up from the dumpster.
From the dumpster?
Prairie View staff will kind of take it between the two.
So, the, you're, what about fire EMS and ambulance service and all of that? That, that seems like a very long way for fire service.
Well, as you can see there, that's, that's the proposed route of it.
I understand. That, am I wrong that it seems like a long way?
Well, I don't know that it's any further than accessing the rest of the campus. You know, there's some buildings kind of on the south side, and they have access. Kind of a different route, but linear.
But they have a street to get to those, all, there's a street in front of all the other properties, correct?
It's the same, it's one entrance, and then you have to disperse through different directions on the campus.
Yes, I understand that.
Has the fire department reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay. They're acceptable with-
This plan up here is what they approved. So, the only request that they had was that we have a turnaround for them to actually be able to turn their vehicle around.
Yeah, usually, they're concerned with length of-
And that, that's why the secondary access is one of their comments.
Yeah.
And there is an existing gravel road that kind of goes along the south through an access agreement that connects to Spencer Street would be the secondary point.
Yeah, I've been, I've been down through that way.
So, is that all, so, fire department, just like that secondary access point, they were acceptable with the condition of it and the maintenance of that gra, that's gravel, right?
They aren't looking at that as a secondary access. They're looking at one primary access, the way it's drawn today.
Okay.
There is no, nothing on the table for secondary access at this point. It would be the request of the streets and/or building that access up on the south side to meet fire specs.
And so, the planned access easement would go up to the property line, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, the waiver for the, for no sidewalks, how would the residents get in and out of the property and within the facility?
So, there will be-
If there are no sidewalks?
There will be connections for sidewalks into their existing campus. The, the waiver here is along industrial, which is the east edge of the property connecting to First Street, since First Street does not have any sidewalks and is an open ditch road, we're just asking for a waiver along that right-of-way.
But you would be providing sidewalks along the turnaround to other paved?
Yeah, you can kind of see at the bottom there, there's access to the facility, and there's a sidewalk on the south side of that building. That's where the sidewalk would run, and then there's more than likely going to be another sidewalk that runs north along that gravel turnaround.
Well, they gotta get their trash up there, right?
Yep.
Specifically, the sidewalk issue is along, up north to First Street. That's what we're asking for the waiver from, because it would be a sidewalk going to First Street where there aren't sidewalks, and it would dead end on the south side.
I have a question for Ed. The First Street project, are they putting sidewalks along First Street?
That will be part of-
Okay, so they're coming pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, that's partly why I was asking the First Street, I didn't know if we're just talking about along the industrial road, the sidewalks, or also along First Street? Or is, is the city asking for participation for the sidewalks, paying for it?
Off First Street?
For, from the adjacent property owners? I don't, I just wondered.
No, we have not.
No, okay.
Just out of curiosity, is the city going to be acquiring additional right-of-way along First Street for that?
Yes, we will have to.
So, Justin? So, you were, you were talking about the no contest thing.
The no protest side of it?
Yeah, the no protest. So, I'm trying to get that straight in my mind. So, what that means is, like, I'm worried about future growth, not having that road there. So, to the south, south of there.
Uh-huh.
So, if somebody wanted to expand to the, to the direct south of there, where this road would be approximately.
Correct.
They're saying that they would not protest at that point in time, and the street would go in.
Correct.
So, this would be, there's, there's, they're, they're not asking us to never be able to put a road there.
That would be their request, that they're waiving to have that put in, not put in. We are saying that we want that coming in by the protest agreement, that they would sign the protest agreement, that they would be a part of the specials and all of that when that street went in.
Yeah.
I believe they're asking not to even put it in.
No, I understand they're asking to not put it in, but, but if we were, we're not, are they asking us to waive it completely and forever, or are they asking to waive it until somebody else would request it from further south, and then they would not protest it, but it would go in at that point in time?
That would be a question for them. The way I understand it is they don't want it today or ever, meaning we want them to sign the no protest, saying that if there's ever development, which could be next week, it could be 50 years from now, we don't know that that, they would be a part of that at that time.
Some cities also do petitions for-
Correct.
-future improvements, which could be done basically with the plat to require petitions for a future improvement.
Correct.
Water, sewer, streets, whatever, sidewalk.
Correct.
So, just to clarify, we're not asking to do it forever. The goal, how the, how we read it as the request was if we want to do anything else on our property, we would then have to install that street. We're asking we don't want to do that. But if the people to the south, if that gets developed or turns into something, we're okay having the no protest agreement at that point, and then would take part in the specials for the installation of that road.
Is that how you understand it? Is that how it's written, Justin?
We don't have anything written yet. It's something that, that we would have to work through the details. But what we're looking at is if they start making 20 homes to the south, one access to all this is not sufficient. We need a secondary access. And if that's building half that street on industrial, that, I mean, that can be a part of the details too. I mean, obviously, we got to get the engineers and all that involved, and the fire marshal to make that distinction as well, to know how far. The, the other one that we have an issue with, and they've talked about secondary access on the south side of their campus, we don't have a picture, but part of that's in the county, so it'd have to be annexed and all that as well. So, there's other situations that if the county said no, well, then it's not a part of the city limits, and we can't put in a street on their property in the county side of it.
So, their south property line is the, the county's south of that, the south property line?
Can you, I don't know if there's a, can you go through some of the pictures? Maybe we'll have one.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything there.
That is correct. I believe it's 40 acres or more, maybe, it might even be the 80, adjacent directly on the south side is in the county. It's farmland. But adjacent to that on the south is already platted, and there is a road that goes north, and it's called Industrial Road.
Correct, yes.
It's not in alignment with this road. It actually would cut through about half of, half of their property. It's about 400 feet west of the half-mile line. But between the two is completely implanted. What I said is farmland. The south, if there is, I believe it's called Industrial Edition.
Yeah. Yeah, then, for Newton. Yeah.
And there is access.
Try to go to the one where I have the water sewer showing on the map, see, keep going, the ones that I asked you later to add.
Oh, I see.
I didn't know how far it went out.
You can see the little red box there. That's in the county, and that would be where possibly they, we've talked about a secondary access coming in. You have the cursor on there. Yeah, so that little section there rolls into possibly a secondary access into their campus, but that would have to be annexed before that street would be able to be put in.
So, I guess, part of the secondary access from our perspective too is we are also having to submit for a building permit, which requires plans and things like that, which would then trigger secondary access. So, it's kind of hard to say we're going to go this way now or this way later. We don't exactly know what the future holds for these buildings. So, all we're asking for is to have the right-of-way there. If they decide to develop along that industrial road right-of-way, then obviously, they'll look at installing the road at that time. If they push it more into their campus, then we'll look at secondary access from a second point. But at that- Um, but at that point, we would have to get fire marshal's approval at that time for whatever future expansion we do. But as far as I know, for what we propose here, the fire marshal has approved of the single access route to the site.
Okay, so I just, I want to make sure I, I, I'm not quite catching that portion of it. So with what you're asking for now with just the three buildings.
Mm-hmm.
If you expand at all, want to build one more.
Mm-hmm.
Then you are okay at that point in time putting the streets in?
So we don't want to necessarily put in the public road at that point. Um, because we may, so if we look at doing one more-
Then what do you mean about, I'm, I'm, what do you mean by future expansion then, if you're not talking about even one more building? What are you talking about?
So if we're looking at one more, we may end up doing secondary access through the campus via that gravel road by improving that, paving it, whatever the case may be. It may not be installing the public right of way along the east side, because it is about five hundred feet from where those buildings would be to that road. Um, so at that point, the five hundred feet doesn't meet fire marshal access. That road is really just a, an arterial connection to connect south is what that's for. Um, at this time, they don't intend to connect to industrial. They're intending to connect through their existing campus. Hopefully that clarifies a little bit.
I don't think the Prairie, the Prairie View facility, um, and I would love for, for Jermaine or Marks or Chris to speak. You know, what their plans are, because they want, like I said, they want to build this as far as down the road, you know, big buildings or whatever, I, I don't know about that. Right now, they're just, they're just wanting to build these small apartments.
And that's, and I guess that's part of my concern is the more, we're already hearing that it, that the city's already not comfortable with. I'm not saying my planning and zoning, we'll, we'll make our own decisions.
Sure.
City's not comfortable with not having a secondary access with what you've proposed. So then to add even more and still, maybe still make the decision, we're just gonna come off the gravel road. Even makes me a little bit even more uncomfortable with expansion and not having a secondary access point.
When you say secondary, you're referring to fire?
Fire, E R, EMS, or I, just in general?
Well, the, the reason I ask is because of, at our last meeting with the fire marshal, I specifically asked because we were going to come in um on this, on the south side where that little red rectangle is.
Yep, yep.
And come up through there and, and then the plan was changed to come off First Street through the existing Prairie View campus. I said, do we need the second one? He goes, no, one is fine.
True.
With what you're proposing today or with what you're proposing the, in, in the future?
I'm proposing today. I, the future, I, I don't know, like I said, um-
So really, all we're trying to ask-
Yeah, yeah, come on up, yeah. Hey, state, state your name, please.
Sorry, Marcy Johnson, president and CEO of Prairie View. So this is really just a continuum of care for us. It's a model of re, like rehabilitation for individuals to come out of our treatment facilities, to have secured housing for no more than ninety days. With work being done to put them back into the communities with stable housing and employment. I don't envision this becoming a large project or a large scale project, simply because workforce wouldn't really support that. So we've kind of scaled it to what we believe will be necessary for our organization, again, not knowing the future. So it's not intended to start here and grow bigger unless the need becomes bigger. Which if at that point it does, then we'll be more than happy to revisit some of these concerns, you know, to, to meet the expanded expectations.
Yeah, a lot of our questions are, we just don't want you to be short sighted doing something today that you're gonna have to redo tomorrow at more expense to you, you know? So we're concerned with that too.
Yeah, the, the intention is not to, to be a large program. It's just to support. I mean, if we look at the care, the unit that we're using to support this, we have anywhere between eight and ten individuals in there at a given time. So we, it's not going to be a large program. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And the program's needed. I'm not arguing one or the other on that for sure. Just can we keep them safe?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah. Any other questions for Chuck or Kobe?
Are we still on number one? I, I mean, I have some questions about the sewer and water.
Yeah, yeah, ask the questions, then, then we'll have a conversation after that.
So the sewer and water is gonna go where?
Sewer and water is going on the west edge of the property within a thirty foot easement. Um, there should be a utility exhibit right there. So this is kind of, this is flipped. So north is to the left here on this picture. Um, we're basically gonna extend public sewer and water to about the roundabout and then that's where they'll tap and make their private extensions off of there. Um, so the subdivision regs require that it be extended through the property. Um, we're just asking to waive that extension, because that extra piece is about six hundred feet, um, which leads to undeveloped property as we discussed.
Well, I have a couple of questions, comments on that.
Yep.
The water line, uh, water line shouldn't be put in utility easements. They should be put in their own separate easement to protect them from other utilities. I'd say that if, if we're gonna extend a water line not adjacent to a paved road, that we put it in a separate water line easement.
Okay.
Um, that would be one. Typically, uh, one of the reasons for the requirement to extend it to the property line is it's just like the sewer and water along First Street. Somebody's paid to get it there for this plat to come in and then take it off of. Uh, I think it's definitely needed to extend it. If it's not today, to have a mechanism to extend it in the future when it's needed. The petition or no protest, uh, something's needed to, to get it to the property line for future extension.
Yep. Previously, we had discussed kind of phasing it. Phase one would be this, phase two would be an extension.
Okay.
Um, with a petition, we're okay with that.
Okay. But I would, as part of the plat, there should be some sort of guarantee that that will be done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if anyone disagrees with that. Any other questions on the sewer water?
Does existing sewer and water line account for additional usage that's there? If they're to kind of tap in?
Is it sized?
Correct.
It all, all's fine?
Yep. When the sewer can't get under the ditch?
Yep. Is there sewer running down First Street right now to get over to Hillsborough Properties, the Hillsborough?
Yes.
And that's where, that's where Prairie View ties into, like it doesn't, it doesn't go off to Spencer, right? It ties off in First Street?
Both of them. Howard, can you go to that picture? We'll be able to look at that towards the end.
Sewer line runs parallel to First Street.
Okay, that's what I'm, that, that's what I thought.
What?
Yeah, it's on the north side of First Street.
Yeah, so there's-
Oh, it's on the north side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it switches to the se, to the south side as we go down, as it goes to the east, right at the half mile line, I think, go across.
Yep.
So again, same question. So if, if the land directly to the south gets developed in some manner.
Correct.
Then sewer and water would have to come down the east side of that property to get there, right?
Yes.
Where the street's at. I mean, basically the street's at.
Usually it's parallel with the street.
I would say, yeah.
Correct. But they're looking to put it in the, on the western side of their platted thing right now. And we would ask that they either extend that or be a part of the no protest agreement. That when it goes in on the eastern side, parallel with the street, that they would be a part of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then that would line up with what's down further south. I mean, if they are already paying for the section that's coming down the middle of their campus, I mean, it would be beneficial in my mind that they would just continue that to the southern property line. But to tie in to then whoever develops that southern property would tie in to industrial as well.
Okay, any other questions on the second request? I've got too many papers up here. Then the third one was the, oh, that's a paved access road.
And, and that's just for the turnaround too. The, the waiver for request three is just the, the turnaround.
So we're proposing the turnaround originally. Can you go back to the utility plan, please? In one of our meetings, we had discussed that existing parking lot, kind of on that northeast corner, extending a paved, either concrete or asphalt portion up to our property line there. Um, we're just asking that that be waived, um, because that portion would extend to just a grass area. It wouldn't serve any purpose. But we are proposing the gravel turnaround still.
I'm, I'm just-
Where do you have existing paving right now too?
Uh, that whole parking lot is paved there with all the stalls.
So right before the circle?
Yep, right before the circle.
And the light gray, the cul-de-sac allows for enough turnaround for a part, for a fire truck.
Yep. So that paved access is about twelve feet from the property line and about a hundred and thirty feet from the units.
So there's a fire hydrant right there, um, next to the cul-de-sac, between the cul-de-sac and the units. So water's served there.
And I've added our subdivision regulations that would require this for maybe more of an explanation here, if you wanted to read those. Twenty-four, four oh six, D E and M are kind of the reason we were, request those.
Any other questions for Carl? You have any questions?
No, I'm-
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and we can further discussion. Well, it is a little unusual to have these requests come straight to us without getting, getting them worked out with the city, so I thought this was a little unusual. I don't know, I guess we can start with number one.
Are, so are we voting on these each, every waiver individually? Is that correct, Justin?
Yes.
No, I think the comments are that this is still at preliminary stage and if there's modifications to the plat, they can still be made. I don't know that we're gonna answer these good enough for the property owner to be satisfied, because I think we're still gonna have questions that should be addressed with city staff. Um, so we'll make an attempt. So let's talk about number one. So that's proposed streets and sidewalks along the arterial that are industrial road. So I guess the, the sidewalk, for me, uh, there should be something, if it's not needed today, that we should have some mechanism to get the sidewalk built. And I, I, the streets are probably at that same discussion, whether there should be a mechanism to get those built down the road when needed.
So I, I-
No, go ahead.
I'm completely confused still on, on a couple items.
Okay.
Proposal, request for waiver number one is the, is just the sidewalks or it's the sidewalk and the street request for a waiver?
In this one here, it seems like they're asking for just the sidewalk. Are you-
That's not what I-
It's both in this one?
It's, I thought it was-
Okay, that's what I meant, that's-
Sorry, I was putting, I was thinking three was a street. It's not. It's the connectivity. So yes, it is both.
Yeah.
Street and sidewalk.
So if and when the road gets put in, the sidewalks will be put in at the same time?
Correct. Yeah, to me, the sidewalk's not the issue. It's the, whether we're, we're gonna waive the street or not. Um, the sidewalk's gonna be part of it when, when it finally does. So let me ask you this question. So if we do approve waiving it. I, I'm having, I'm struggling with the difference between, they're asking us to, to waive it for the entire subdivision. Not just for phase one of this request. Is that correct?
That's-
It's really the entire subdivision you're asking us to waive it for, correct?
It's, yes and no. So we would like to find some way, we basically just don't want it to be, if they build, let's say, one unit. Because I think one unit, the fire marshal will be okay. Um, so we just want to avoid the wording that if anything gets built. Um, now, obviously, if, if they do some kind of big expansion here, then they, then yes, we'll have some kind of mechanism in place to install that street and the sidewalk. Um, the easiest way to do that, in my opinion, is probably a petition. We'll have a petition on file for both the street and the sidewalk together as a single project. That way, if there is enough development to trigger that, then they would have the funds, um, through the petition to install both of those. So the intent isn't to waive it completely forever. Um, it's just, we ca, we just, we're trying not to back ourselves in a corner where we say any development is all we're asking here.
Yeah, so then it comes back to, my question for that then would be, do we have the authority as our body to approve a subdivision waiver? Subject to them building only three units?
It would go on the, it would be a part of the plat. It would be a request that you guys would have.
So we are approving the, the plat the way it would re, where we're gonna wait, if we decide we're gonna do it, we can waive the way the plat re, reads today. So any modification or resubmission of more phases.
Would be a note that we would require them to put on the plat.
So the, the problem with, the problem with the street is if, if the property to the south develops, it's blocked. There's no way out and this is a half mile line. There needs to be a road that connects industrial from the, from First Street all the way down to industrial park. Uh, there's no mechanism to get it through here if we don't-
Right.
The city can, we have right of way, but it's gonna be city dollars paying for it, not developer dollars.
Yeah, I, and I, and I think I understand that. My question still comes back to, do we have the authority then to put it as part of the motion? Is that part of the motion that we would make?
Correct.
Any request, I mean, I guess it's either this subdivision, any future growth to the south would require them to put street and sidewalk in at that point in time. Is that, is that part of the motion?
Correct. Because this, this waiver is what they're asking and you can either approve or deny it or make your own to it.
Version of it.
Correct. Yeah, but, so I, I would want to have some mechanism to pay for a street or sidewalk in the future when it's needed. Like a petition.
I think you're hearing me concur to that.
Uh, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, as long as, as long as a fire marshal has signed up on the, the current units that are there and is okay with what is gonna happen with these three units.
He, staff is on board with the way it's drawn today. Just we, we need something in place for future development. And what that future development is, is that one building that we require them to go in, twenty buildings? It seems to be a gray area of what the future holds. So we as staff, which would be fire marshal as well, all put this memo together. So that'd be any expansion of any kind of building would require this, the remainder items.
And you're saying additional growth to the six units or any growth period?
Any growth period.
Yeah, I, I, I think approving it the way it is with this particular plat is important in my mind. And I guess I'll, I guess I'll just say that I'm in favor of the, of this, this waiver with this plat.
Let's do this by motion. Well, but this, if we don't do it with this plat, we'd have no mechanism to get this ever done. Unless, unless there's another, a development or further development on this plat that would require it, which, then they could bring a road up the center of the property. I mean, hard to tell them what could happen.
Mm-hmm. So I'll make a motion to approve waiver one. So, I'll make a motion to approve waiver one with the current plat system. So, any future growth would require. Do I want, should I put in my motion about would require anything or that, or is that for you guys to work that out yet?
I, that.
I'll stop my motion and hold it for a second.
You guys, I mean, this is your guys' meeting, not telling you what to do or not to do. You could have them work with staff longer and table this whole item if we're not comfortable with the decisions you guys are making. I, let me. We can bring. Let me stop there. Something a little more clear. I mean, that's. I agree, let me stop there. So, what I think should happen here, these waivers, you, we've given you our general comments. You understand where we're coming from. To me, and the reason I stated that this is unusual for us to be hearing this, this is usually worked out at staff level and then it comes to us for a final decision, not for waivers. I think we've given general comments about waiver one. We would like a mechanism to be able to pave and put sidewalks in for future, whenever that is. For waiver two, we would like the same thing, a mechanism. We don't need the water and sewer put into the property line today, but when it's needed, we would like that mechanism put in so it can be extended in the future. Option three, or waiver three. The paved access road. If we have the access easement to the property line, the question would be whether we add, whether it needs to be paved or gravel to the property line. If the fire department's okay with gravel or other emergency services and we have access to these properties with all emergency services with ambulance too, then we have a, they have the right to access this property to the property line. We can gravel it to the property line. I mean, gravel's not, doesn't cost that much. So, I don't know, I mean, those are things that, at least in my mind, that's where I think we've ended up here in the discussion. Those three things that.
I agree. My question is, do you put in, are you asking to table it now until they get, things worked out? Or are you saying, let's go ahead and move.
Well, we, we have to.
With motion.
We have to consider the, the motion should be for preliminary plat denial or approval with the, with the stipulations of things we just stated. So, we can deny the preliminary plat, essentially giving it back to staff to work this out. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, could you just make, could you make a contingent upon agreement on those three waivers? Then we don't have to come back here.
Yeah, based on what I just said, I'm not going to repeat it. Based on what I just said.
Versus tabling, which means it's got to be revisited here. That, that's what I'm saying.
It depends on where you guys get with your discussions. If staff comes to us and says, oh, we're good now, based on the three things we just talked about, wouldn't we be good?
Yeah, I would ask that then if that's what we're going to do, that we would be able to do the preliminary and the final plat at the same time if it's necessary to bring it back.
I would agree with that too. We, we could, we could shorten the timeframe by doing preliminary and final at the same time. Yeah, I think that's where you're coming from, right Chuck? Oh, and I, one last thing, Chris or Ed, do you have anything else to add to that discussion?
I think from the staff side, we just, we do have concerns to ensure that city staff has no control on any future development down the road, that we're not locking out from having safe public access, physical vehicle access, but also access to utilities in that plat. So, we're just trying to ensure not, all parties seem agree. We're not sure what's going to, how the plat is going to develop in the future, but we want to have those mechanisms in place that it can be done.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. All sound good? So, is there a motion for the preliminary plat? Y'all look confused.
I'm not sure what we're approving, to be honest with you.
Well, I, I can make the motion. I'll make the motion to deny the preliminary plat contingent upon the three waiver items and the other staff comp, addressing other, all the other staff comments.
Which means it'll come back to us. I agree with that.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I think he's seconding that.
Okay, that's second, okay. Have a motion and second. All in favor, say yes. Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry that took so long.
Lot of work there.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope they're happy because I feel like we just did a whole lot of nothing.
Okay, next, update on selection of the city comprehensive plan. Rebecca?
Yeah, we'll try to make this quick for you guys tonight. So, as you remember, in February, the RFP was sent out to select a consultant to work on our new comprehensive plan. The proposals will due April first, no irony there. They were submitted to the planning, Donnie Administrator, Justin. Seven firms did submit proposals in both print and digital form, just like we asked. And you'll see the RFP in your packet that they replied to. There was a comprehensive selection committee, as you remember, that's six members. We had a city commissioner, two of the planning commissioners that you all chose and three city staff. We met in person on April fourth, reviewed the proposals and then we continued our discussions to go against the different criterion and then the reference community feedback that was given. So, we called and Justin emailed and sent out different notices because we really wanted to make sure we got a good feel. We had some very strong proposals and wanted to sift through them. They were ranked on their approach and content and timeline for a 45% of that. The qualification and demonstrated competencies were ranked at 35% and then their past project experiences and client references at 20. There were two proposals that really rose to the top and they were neck and knack. And those were picked with utilizing more reliance on those client references and the other nuances that came into the top details. So, the top pick ended up being Olson. And city staff has been entered in some discussions to establish that scope of services, the expense schedule, review the general provisions, which are attached in your packet. Special note was really taken to the robust public engagement plan. We had a lot of city staff and other commissioners talk about the great public engagement during the Bree Newton process. So, a lot of those continuing pieces came into this one as well. This plan also includes an update to our housing study utilizing the same contractor. It's just who happened to be who they had packaged with, who've done our latest housing study. So, that's kind of a additional perk in this one, if you will. There's also note taken to the public surveying system to do other survey research. That was another piece that laid heavily into some people's votes. And then, of course, the success that what they had with similar communities. Andover was one that was close by that was noted in their proposal. So, this is just for you for review. It goes to the city commission tomorrow at their meeting for their review. And if they are agreeable with it, the city manager will enter into contract. I'll be presenting the same item to them. So, of course, if you have any comments, they're going to want to know. I know it's a lot to read, but it is exciting to continue to get moving on this process and get a new updated plan.
I have one question.
Of course.
What's our role with this?
Oh, you're going to have a lot of roles.
Didn't I ask?
No, I apologize. Yes, so there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of next engagement steps. So, if all goes well and the city commission approves it, then in the next week or two, we will be starting a kickoff meeting internally. There will be technical advisory committee, there will be planning commission advisory committees, there'll be city commission advisory committees, there'll be other multiple types of pieces. So, into those technical details of things such as subdivision regulation, housing needs, all of that, your opinion will be very valuable, very asked for, very necessary. And hopefully, we'll be able to make it in lots of ways that you can participate, in person, virtually, surveys, whatever. But it'll be a very, very strong role in helping to determine how you see the future of the community and really taking into your professional expertise and your roles as planning commissioners.
Yeah, and I think we as commissioners really need to take an evangelistic role to make sure that we're reaching to our friends and family and acquaintances, to get them engaged in this process. Because, you know, I mean, I, Bree Newton and I was active in that part. I thought that was a good way, but I think we, we each, so I think in spite of the, or not only in our specific roles as, as commissioners, but in our collective roles, we really need to be true evangelists to get this in. Because if otherwise, if we just have a handful of people, it'll, yeah, it really won't get the community buying.
And you're going to push us to do that, right?
Well, we've got some other great people that'll help. Our communications director will be probably leading the charge on that one, but yes.
Okay, so maybe we don't have to be.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rebecca. Any old business? New business? This meeting's adjourned.
We should now open the Newton Historic Preservation Commission on Monday, July 7th. We'll start with consideration of approval of the May 5th, 2025 minutes.
I've moved their approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. Election of officers.
Just as a quick reminder, just the way that your bylaws are written, the election of officers for the historic preservation commission is a month after the ones for the planning commission. And since there was no meeting, it would be the following month. So, the three officer positions you need are the chair, vice chair and secretary. I'm sure your secretary wants to do it again.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we retain the same officers we had in the previous year.
I'll second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
That was my motion two months ago in the planning.
It was, I remember.
Review of the CLG agreement, Historic Preservation Pedia.
All right. So, what you have before you is a certified local government agreement. As you may remember, Newton has been a certified local government since 1998. The agreement comes due about every five years. So, in 2020, one of the first things I did when I got here is we got ourselves a brand spanking new agreement. This allows us to enact state law. So, the whole reason we get to get together and do all this fun stuff once a month is because we have this agreement. Otherwise, we'd just be able to review our own ordinances. So, this gives us that state law review and lets us move along projects much, much faster. One piece that's especially interesting in our agreement is that we have an appendix, which allows myself as historic preservation officer to do some things administratively. Justin and I reviewed this appendix and still feel like it meets most of the criteria we have. This allows us to do things such as replace a roof on a downtown building very, very quickly without having to call you all for a meeting, without having to send it to the state. Like for like, meets the historic criteria and we can send that off within hours. Usually, we do it within 24 hours of approval of a, of a, an item. This is a very unique thing we have. There are less and less certified local governments and, that I know of currently, we're the only certified Main Street and certified local government in the state of Kansas. So, we can help spur that downtown economic development by not removing barriers that might be held in time. There was a modified agreement in 2023 when the Newton, North Newton Historic Preservation Commission was reformed, but that doesn't, didn't restart our time. So, if you do look back through your agendas and like, I think we just did that and it was less than five years ago. It was, but it was not quite the same one. That was just a modification, if you will. So, this will also go to the city commission tomorrow night, but I just wanted to bring it before you all as well.
So, the motion today would be to recommend that the mayor sign this agreement or no recommendation at all?
There's no, no vote, just to review.
We should now discuss the award of the 2023 HPF grant.
So, I think you all remember that I mentioned that city staff had applied for this grant. This was going to expound our digital walking tour and add kind of a, I call it a podcast-like approach where you could listen to stories. Found some really great inspiration at different conferences. Our CBB Main Street Coordinator has led the charge in helping think of the interesting products where you would use a QR code and scan it, maybe on a, on a cling film on a front business window and learn about what happened at that business or on that street at this day and time. We did, we were awarded the grant. It's a little over $15,000. We'd work with local historians and other local groups to make sure that we're really lifting up different stories that nobody's maybe heard as much before or maybe we've forgotten. However, while funding has been allotted through Congress to fund this, it has not been released. So, the letter in your pocket is our award letter, but we are waiting for a release of funds. And that release of funds is affecting a lot of items at the State Historic Preservation Office. They're currently preparing for some layoffs if those funds do not get released by the end of the month. So, they have been budgeted, they've been allowed for, but they are not being released. And so, we're hoping that.
So, this may be pushed back?
Yeah, as you'll notice, yes, as you'll notice in this, because while there is that federal funding allocated by Congress in March, it has not been released. So, we're hoping, we've accepted this tentatively, but we aren't able to start on it. So, that's just giving you an update. Don't usually get a grant that we can't bring you a grant agreement for. But we're hoping that maybe they want to release those funds and we could get started on this.
So, what's the group that's kind of helped designing the, or the augmentation?
So, it's going to be, it's going to be a multi-pronged approach. John Lehman, who's our CBB and Main Street Coordinator, has put together a great group of people with some of the, I cannot think of the name right now, just escaped me, but one of the Mexican-American groups in town wants to do a couple of them in Spanish. Chris Schmucker's picked up and found some of the ones that she's already taken a lot of roles in. And then they're pulling from some of the other community groups. And we'd want to do a poll too, seeing like, what would you like to hear? Is there a story that maybe your, maybe your organization has a really neat historic thing that you just don't think gets told enough? The greatest thing is because we have kind of almost unlimited expansion digitally. Once we get the platform set up.
Right.
We can continue to add to it. So, we're really excited. It's been done in a couple other communities and it's just a great, more modern way to help bring that history a little bit more alive than the old plaques we used to do. It's a lot more multimodal. So, we're really excited, hoping that it gets released so we can get started on it. And as you remember, it's a 60-40 grant. Our match tends to be in staff hours. And so, that's how we, we applied for it, is the match would be completely staff time from the city's perspective.
Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, review of the results of the 309 East Fifth.
Yes.
The letter.
Yes. As you remember, at our last meeting, you reviewed the request to demolish. You denied that request. It went to the city commission. The city commission did approve the demolition of it. It went, then we gave notice to the state. The state did correct me and inform me that they do not need 30 days anymore and they do not need it in a paper. They'll take email and it takes five days. And they got back to us very quickly, as you know from my previous item, that they are looking at their potential staff shortages as well. So, they're moving very quickly if they're having to downsize. And that's what they sent us back, this letter, giving us the notice that they reviewed it. And then we were able to issue the demo permit and I don't know if it's actually been issued yet. I don't think it has. But they have been granted the ability to issue a permit to demolish the home. After it would be demolished, the site would be prepared. It would, as you know, have to go, be built back to the McKinley design standards. So, that falls under our local ordinance and our local design standards. There's multiple different styles of homes that could fit under that, those design standards. It wouldn't have to be just a single one. You would have to just do a craftsman or, you know, just something exactly like this or similar to it. It could be anything that fits in the district. We'd be looking at similar setbacks, similar heights. And so, any rebuild would come before you all.
So theoretically, who owns that now, the city or the still the same owner owns that?
Hud.
Hud owns that? Now, is that possibility for the land bank?
The, the city commission did ask that and the applicant said, well, if the land bank wants to buy it.
Sure.
If Hud wants to sell it.
If Hud wants to sell it, yeah.
It probably would go on the market at some point. But that was not a caveat of the agreement, no.
Got you.
But that would be one option if the land bank wanted to utilize funds or it was on the market for that. So, those are just some quick updates for you all.
Any other old business? New business? Adam? I guess we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, city staff.
Good to see you, Ed, here.